Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the King George County Board of Supervisors Budget Work Session for this evening. We're going to start out with invocation. It could be done by Mr. Granger. So if you could all please stand.
Lord, we just come before you humbly and we thank you for the majesty and glory of the creation, the changes of the seasons and the opportunity to just enjoy your creation and be out in it. The beautiful weather you have provided for us. Thank you for the blessings you have provided us. And just ask that you continue to be with us, provide us with grace and mercy. Be with us this evening as the board deliberates about our budget. Just please be with us to help make good judgments that would be in the best interest of this community, as well as those that would further your glory, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Granger. I'm going to open the floor up now for public comment. If anybody's here for public comment, you have three minutes to come speak. Seeing none, Mr. Dines, anybody online? Okay. Anybody get any correspondence or anything that need to be read? Okay, thank you. Well, we will close out that. And moving on to outside agency presentations, Office on Youth, Mr. Farren. Step right up, sir.
And yes, I asked Mr. Davy Farren to join us tonight based on the conversation that we had at our last Budget Work Session. And so he's gonna talk to you a little bit about their request.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I gotta tell you, you know, it was, I attend a lot of meetings. It was actually nice to see a meeting opened up with prayer, I mean, you know, for what that's worth. I don't know whose decision that was or whatever, but it was nice to see that. Nice change. But my name is Davy Farren. I'm with the Rappahannock area Office on Youth. And we're a regionally commissioned agency, intergovernmental agency. We're not a nonprofit. We've been in existence since about 1998 and we exist by code. And our commission is made up of elected officials and county administrator appointees. And so that's what separates us from a lot of the other nonprofits that they have to apply for funding. We do too, however, we do receive separate consideration. And so we do have to function, we have to, we were governed a lot by similar, similar laws and practices of local government. And I'm here today because Donna allowed me the opportunity to advocate for us receiving some ARPA funds. You all should have a request in front of you for, for some funds for, to make up for lost revenue. And also a contracted therapist position. And at this point, I mean, I believe I'm here to answer questions. I could, I could present a lot more on it, but a lot of it would be repetitive to what you have in front of you. But I know the need for, let's say, the van. We, we do have some vehicles already. However, the van I'm looking to replace is our 2006 12 passenger van with about 185,000 miles on it. And we use that primarily to transport kids for our community service learning activities. And so, you know, just this week for spring break, we partnered with Friends of Rappahannock. And they were, they were visiting the river. They were creating little watershed activities. I think Friday they're going to remove an invasive species from, from some land far, far away in Virginia. And but these are the opportunities that we provide to some of the court-involved youth to, as well as roadside, roadside cleanup, which you all may be familiar with me used to do in King George quite some time ago. In addition to community service, the other programs that we provide to the youth in the region, as well as the King George Anger Management Substance Use Restorative Justice. We also operate the Chaplain Group Home. So we provide shelter care as well as group home services. So and with that, with our substance use classes, we typically have a therapist through a partnership with the R A C S B. And the therapist provides the kids that are there with assessments. So, so they could, if they need additional treatment or they need more intensive attention than what they would get in a group education class, they could get the treatment that they need compared to going to the R A C S B themselves, who right now they have about a, about a two-week wait period. And they also, right now, have 83 vacancies, 18 of which are for therapists. And one of those 18 are for, is for a therapist for the Office on Youth. So that's why we're seeking to, seeking some funds to be able to contract with a therapist for a year. It's, you know, after a year, we're hoping that within this year, they could find a therapist for us. However, right now, kids are, parents, actually, parents are trying to take their kids wherever they could get them to get an assessment so they can receive the treatment that they, that they need. So hopefully that wasn't too, too much information. It all makes sense. Are there any questions specifically to the request?
Any questions from you all? Mr. Granger?
Sir, thank you. Sir, thank you so much for coming out and providing the brief. So there's the request for using some ARPA funds for the contracted therapist for one year, you're saying. And then you're saying someone, you're looking for someone to provide you with a therapist after that? Who was it that would provide the therapist?
The R A C S B.
R A C S B. Okay. So it comes from their funds then at that point, is what you're saying?
Right. We have some funds for that because we share the cost.
Yes, sir.
You know, but absent of them being able to provide that, our services have stalled as it relates to providing those services. So we need to go elsewhere while they look to hire.
Understand. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Ms. Bender?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you for coming also, is on the back of your page of your handout, you have revenue lost. How, I guess I am confused at how there's lost revenue.
Because during, during a pandemic, we, there was, so first me back up, I've only been there about nine months. Okay. However, I am familiar with their services. But during a pandemic, we had to stop in-person services. And the R A C S B, they also, well, the therapist that was there, she left. And so between us having to pause in-person services and their therapist leaving, we weren't able to bill for some of those services, as well as we do bill for some other services. So everything almost came to a grinding halt because we couldn't have kids in the building to hold classes and we couldn't send them out on the vans for community service.
And you mentioned billing. Who do you bill?
The Virginia, the VJ triple C A plan through the CSU, as well as DSS. They pay for, for, for the group home, group home services and residential placements at Chaplain.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Collins?
No questions. Thank you for coming out. Thanks for having me.
My question is, you know, unfortunately, when we, we came across you in the last meeting, myself and I don't know a couple of other colleagues that never even heard of the office. Who, I know, I'm looking at your clients. Who, who makes up your clients? And do you have an age group? I mean, is it only court-appointed, court-appointed, age ranges that you all deal with client-wise?
Yes, primarily historically, they have been court-appointed. This past year, we've started working with school divisions. And so right now, we're piloting a program with Spotsylvania County Schools and working through the kinks. But the plan is to support the school divisions, you know, with, with services for their kids in lieu of suspension. And so a little spoiler alert here, we're working with CSU, Danielle Hicks and Vince, to possibly support King George students in, you know, this upcoming year as well.
So the clients are up to 18, I take it?
Fully skipped it. I apologize. Yeah, so 12 to 18.
12 to 18?
Sir.
Okay, thank you. I think that was my only question, but thank you for coming out.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, moving on, we have NeoGov Learning Management Demonstration by Mr. Van Ocker.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Excellent. Let me go ahead and get my screen shared here. Thank you, Chris. There we go. So you should see that title page. Good evening. My name is indeed Vincent Van Ocker. I'm the East Coast Account Manager here at NeoGov. Want to thank you to the Board of Supervisors, the County Leadership Team, as well as the Citizen Advisory Group for having me this evening. It's a pleasure to meet everyone and a great opportunity to join. As you alluded to, quick agenda for this portion of the meeting. I'll take you through the project that Amanda Sumiel and I have been working on. Share with you a little bit about, well, who is NeoGov? Summary of the training software project and the critical project objectives and deliverables it's designed to bring to the table, as well as highlights of the system. From there, I'll certainly open it up to the group for any additional questions that you all may have. For those of you that may not be familiar with NeoGov, the organization itself has been around for over 20 years. Born in the late 90s there with an exclusive focus on local government, which continues to be its biggest differentiator, kind of its niche, if you will, in the software space. Fast forward to 2022 and NeoGov has over 6,000 government agency customers nationwide. A number of those agencies, all levels of government across the state of Virginia. And I'll be sure to share with you all a list of those. Always helpful to know which of our peers uses this technology and who can we reach out to for some additional feedback. Now, all of that typically begs the follow-up question as to why? Why do so many government agencies turn to NeoGov when it comes to technology projects like training software? And that's where we'll start. And primarily, and as I've already alluded to, it's because NeoGov is indeed purpose-built for local government. To our customer base, what that means simply is that we speak and understand your language. Whether you're talking to someone in sales, implementation, or customer success. Each step of the way, you're working with a team that really understands those unique nuances of government. I can't speak on behalf of all of you in the room now. I actually come from the private sector before I joined NeoGov. I can certainly tell you for myself, coming over to NeoGov in 2015, it was some stark differences. I recognized pretty quickly, especially as it relates to process, compliance, a lot of the training initiatives Amanda and I have been working on. So certainly a big advantage there for NeoGov to specialize in government, in government alone. I also mentioned that NeoGov has over 6,000 government customers. Another unique advantage to the extent that all the systems it develops, the enhancements that are built in, everything NeoGov does is based on the feedback from that user base and what they want to see built into these systems going forward, which creates this for us, by us model when it comes to our software development, again, keeping things very industry-focused. And lastly, critical part of most technology projects these days, but the delivery method of all of NeoGov's software is entirely web-based technology, which simply means whether I'm working in the office full-time, part-time in a hybrid environment, or spending time in the field, or even if I'm fully remote, everything that I need to do from a training and execution standpoint is fully accessible from any type of internet accessible device. So I hope that gives you all just a general overview of who's on the other side of the call here. Now, when it comes to the technology stack itself, Amanda and I have spent quite a bit of time the last couple of years really combing through the vast majority of the functions that you see there on the screen. NeoGov software in general is designed to automate the entirety of the employee lifecycle, from the bottom right-hand portion where you see recruit and advertising, talent acquisition, and the onboarding process, to where we'll focus today in part of the develop component, from performance management to ongoing training, to employee management there on the left, which encompasses the vast majority of what we consider HRIS technology. I'll spare you all the time going through the entirety of the tool and instead dive into the critical piece to today's meeting. And that's that learning management piece, which NeoGov refers to as LEAR. Now, LEAR is NeoGov's training software or LMS. By nature or by virtue of the system encompasses over 1,200 government-specific trainings, all of which can be conducted virtually or in a classroom setting. The course content would include trainings on the compliance end, like workplace safety and sexual harassment prevention, as well as courses that can be much more job or purpose-specific. For example, cybersecurity, very popular right now, or leadership development training to continuously cultivate talent from within. In addition to the course content that the system comes with, it's also referred to as a three-in-one tool. Is yes, there's pre-configured content maintained by NeoGov in that library. Also reserves the ability for all customers to create, configure, and customize our own training. Things that might be completely unique to King George County. Now, that can be done utilizing pre-configured content, PowerPoints, ZIP and SCORM files, adding those into that library, or even coordinating a classroom session with a subject matter expert to maintain a roster and attendee list. The third of those three-in-one tools would be any type of external training. So especially for employees that might go outside of the county to get a certification or a license. I can now upload that into my talent profile and we can track against those certifications, against the expiration dates to ensure there's no lapse or gap in coverage there. Now, as far as those critical objectives I had mentioned that Amanda and I had been working on, the idea is to deliver a library of courses for continued education across the entire county. Support employee growth and career planning initiatives, increase employee engagement and retention, centralize the tracking and reporting for HR, personnel, as well as leadership, alongside both training activity and external certifications and licenses. And most importantly, do it in a user-friendly capacity. So whether I'm an employee, a supervisor, a department head, very simple technology to use from a training and reporting perspective. With that, I'll dive into some of the details of the system and then open it up to the team for questions. When it comes to, again, some of the critical functions to give you a little bit more of a flavor of the system itself, I touched on that course catalog. Again, there are indeed over 1,200 courses that are built within the training library. And those trainings can also be gated. So if I am an employee in a specific department, I may see a certain scope of trainings, whereas an HR administrator may see others, things that are relevant to me in my position. Trainings can also be gated by requiring approval. If I'm an individual contributor, I raise my hand and I want to get promoted, right? I may want to register for leadership development skillset training. In that scenario, my manager may need to approve it before I can go ahead and continue to complete courses. I also touch on content creation. So yes, there's quite a bit of content this system brings to the table out of the box. That's not where it ends. Every agency I've worked with in my seven years with NeoGov absolutely prefers to design courses that are unique to their agency. Again, whether that's using pre-configured tools that we own locally, leveraging third-party partnerships or resources that we have at our disposal, or even bringing in, again, a classroom course through a subject matter expert. I touched on classroom courses. This is an example of the registration process to determine where training sessions will be held, who can register, automating the check-in process, or even creating a survey or quiz at the end for all attendees. I also touched on certification and license tracking. Those will be uploaded into an employee's talent profile along with the centralization of reporting to ensure that we have up-to-date certs and licenses where appropriate. Learning plans take it one step further, allowing our supervisors and department heads to create a sequence of courses for a specific purpose. So I use the example of future leadership, the very common emphasis point for a lot of agencies I work with. We have employees that are high potentials, that are in their individual contributor roles. They want to get put into leadership. We may design a learning plan with a sequence of leadership development training. Now, once that employee has completed that sequence of courses, we might want to certify them as a future leader. A lot of agencies use these learning plans for succession planning initiatives and ensure that we can backfill for any unexpected turnover in leadership. Lastly here, as it relates to reporting and insight, another critical piece of any software project. Yes, this, this system can automate training, assignments, and completion. Now, from an administrative standpoint, we can oversee the progress of all that training activity from simplified reporting. So if I am indeed in Amanda's shoes, I might need to oversee that for the entirety of the county. This reporting gives me all the data and insight I need to see what trainings have been completed, what courses are planned for completion, is there anything that may have slipped past its due date, especially those that might be compliance-based and required to ensure training activity is completed and completed on time. So with that, I'll pause there. I hope that was a quick synopsis of the project and the key and critical elements that Amanda and I have been working through. Want to open it up to the room for any additional questions I can help answer today.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Bender?
Thank you very much. Who creates these courses? Is it an outside group or is inside?
All created and maintained by NeoGov.
NeoGov. And what is the source of the training that creates the, it's just created by your staff?
Correct. Yep, we have an entire team of individuals, part of our LEAR department that sit in our office in Denver.
Okay. And then you mentioned compliance-based. Is the compliance based on you working with our HR? Or is that, where's, is it individualized for each county? Or whoever?
In most cases, I would, yeah, great question. In most cases, it would be specific to state requirements, in my experience. But yes, as I mentioned earlier, there's nothing preventing us from configuring courses that are completely unique to requirements at the county level.
And then my last question is concerning the employee training. So you have a lot of leadership, but there's, it doesn't seem to be there's much specific for each department. Like I'm giving an example, if you wanted to be a better planner.
Yeah, another great question. I use some of those leadership examples because it kind of paints that picture for continued career development. A big emphasis point for a lot of customers I work with. But when I talk about the volume of courses in the library, it's all categorized, right? And this is an export I think I've sent to Amanda and more than happy to share with the group as well. There are courses that apply to all sorts of different departments. I mean, there are public safety-specific courses. There are business skill-related courses for things like Microsoft Office. There are, again, some of more of the soft skill courses, like I touched on, health and safety courses, liability training. So yeah, some can be very department-specific, others can be much more general or what I would consider compliance-based.
And then how much is the yearly cost? I think it was mentioned in our last work session, it was about 18,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Koker?
No, he had nothing.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a follow-up question from what Ms. Bender asked, and I know you have some law enforcement-related courses in here. Are those, do those meet the, I see one of your counties and a couple of your counties in Virginia, Fairfax County and Prince William County. Are you, when you offer those courses, are you meeting our state DCJS requirements? Or is it more just a broad, general kind of thing?
My initial inclination would be broad and general. I would have to do a little more due diligence on what those requirements are. As you might imagine, of course, that varies from state to state, county to county. But we can do some additional homework on that. I don't know that I have a perfect answer for yes or no on that question.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Ms. Collins? Questions?
Still reviewing this, I have a question this time.
I had just a couple of questions, but I think they're mostly answered. So all the training you all do, your staff comes up with all the curriculum, you said, and are there trainers, all yours also? I think, I think I heard you say that you do get outside trainers to come in?
The trainings themselves within the library are all virtual courses. So trainers by definition would be included in the, in the video content itself. When I mentioned bringing in subject matter experts, that's something that would typically be more localized at the county level, right? We might bring in, you know, somebody to conduct maybe an in-person CPR course, right? Where we can, that would be housed from an assignment and attendee perspective within the system to track it. But the proctor, right, that leads the course would be done and gotten by the county.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Anything?
Just one quick question.
Go ahead.
Can we get a PDF of this? Thank you. That's all. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Chair?
Ms. Collins?
So this doesn't meet DCJS requirements, is what I'm hearing?
I would have to do more due diligence on that to confirm.
How about the, the organization that for fire and rescue doesn't meet their requirements for their, other than in-person, their learning management?
I don't know if he heard you. I don't, I don't know if he heard you. You might need to speak up or I can repeat it if you would like.
So like the Sheriff's Office has a lot of requirements for their state mandated training. And some of them they have to do in person.
Absolutely.
Firearms and so forth, but many of them they can do, they could do maybe online. But the fire and rescue have the same type of thing. Their certifications, fire and rescue, do they have these certifications through this learning management system?
I don't, I don't know.
The short answer. Oh, sorry.
No, I would just want to make sure you had heard that question.
Yes, yeah, about Sheriff's Office state mandated trainings and requirements. So for the most part, right, when public safety agencies use this technology and we're talking about, you know, content that's state mandated or that follows jurisdictional requirements, usually that content already lives somewhere, right? Whether it's online through a third-party system, or if it's done to the, the other point that was made, some trainings are done in person. So the tracking of that certification would all be done in NeoGov. The content still lives where it needs to be, right? Whether it's through a third-party site or it's an onsite course that's conducted for the Sheriff's Department.
Did that, did that answer your question? Yeah, I think that what, what Mr. Van Ocker is saying is that this is a system that would be internal for us to track personnel development, you know, training for each employee, how they get it. And clearly Sheriff Giles has standards that his, all of his employees have to meet, whether it's E911, all the way to a deputy, same thing with, with Chief, Chief Moody in terms of his folks as well. And so how they get that obviously would be just, we track it. And that's what I think most of this is about. There's resources that they're talking about that they could provide to us to do some of these things. But it would be more of a tracking and, and not necessarily this entity providing that service for those specific services you're talking about, fire and, and the Sheriff's Office.
So follow-up on my question. So I understand, I've used the learning management system, not this particular one, but the state one. And, you know, it's good for sexual harassment, those boilerplate courses that everyone's required to take. But, but if we're going to invest this kind of money, and I'd like some input from the sheriff and the fire and rescue, if this is going to be something that they can, that it can assist them to have less time on-site at the academy, if they can do in-house, other than boil plate, that will meet the requirements for the state. And even, you know, the water authority, their wastewater operator, all, all those type of things, there's, that will meet the requirements of the state. So they won't have to travel to Richmond to do some of these things. So that's my, that's my big question is, I understand the boil plate.
Right.
How it helps out everyone in that whatever, like sexual harassment and driver skills and all that. But I'm very, I'm curious, concerned about the specifics of the entire county.
So if you will, this system will not replace those type of courses. So those that are very specific to say wastewater, water operation, public safety. But again, they will hit those higher level, the general classes. And it does offer so many other classes like safety, parks and rec. I mean, things that, again, overall, every department can utilize. But when you get into very specific courses that are just for public safety, EMT, those types of things, it's not going to replace that. Miss, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think the understanding is spot-on. However, it certainly acts as a supplement to that training activity. And that's something I imagine, Amanda, we can certainly coordinate a separate session with the, you know, public safety teams, the water department, you know, to determine where is that content that is very department and job-specific for either required purposes or certification purposes. And then either can that be built into the library to centralize the tracking and certainly house those certifications so we can report on it and store it in a unified capacity? So where is that and how can we get it into the library? That'll be the big thing I think we can check the box on.
Yeah. And Vincent, one question. Could we actually create a class? So we do have training that is done for like fire rescue. We send them to an academy that we actually teach. We send them to an academy that we actually teach in-house. So could we create those classes and put them into the system? That's possible, correct?
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Chair, I would like some input from the sheriff and fire and rescue and maybe some water authority folks and see if this would be something that would be useful for them, how do they feel about it?
Amanda, I got a question for you. How are these credits? You know, I guess it's kind of like a continuing head-type setup. How are these credits tracked? Do you do it? Did they get a customer login that, you know, that I could log back in and see what classes I've taken? Or do you get a little, I guess, a diploma or a sheet that says that you've taken a class? How does, how's that tracked?
So there is a certificate that the employees will get and they have access to, and also a transcript that they can go back and look at the courses that they've completed. As far as continuing education, Vincent, can you help me on that? Does it actually give them say one point or two points, or this can count toward continuing ed? I know a lot of our employees have certifications that they have to keep up with those credits. So do these courses actually apply for continuing education?
Yeah, that's usually a function of that tool I refer to as learning plans, where again, that sequence of appropriate courses to maintain a certification can be designed for that particular initiative. I think you answered the question that was brought up perfectly. When it comes to tracking those certifications or licenses, right? Whatever is developed in the system as a result of the training, absolutely, of course, HR and supervisory staff would have the ability to see that on the employee behalf, as would the employee. This is a tool that would be utilized by, I imagine, all county employees to have my own talent profile, to review coursework that I've completed historically, certifications I've accumulated, track against notifications that are automated in the system to ensure that if I do need to get recertified, I do need additional continuing education credits, right? I'm notified proactively and then that failsafe in reporting, right? So at an administrative level, there's still oversight for department heads and county
Thank you.
What we can do is we can, we can ask Chief Moody and Sheriff Giles, and I can get with our folks at the service authority and provide that information. And then have them come back at the next meeting and talk about this. I will say this, that if this is not right for the Sheriff's Office, or if this is not right for fire and rescue, there's other departments obviously in this organization that would benefit from this, and we would obviously not. You know, one way of looking at this is you're doing this all upfront, and you can pay for it that way. The other thing to do is to think about the fact that this is going to be something that's going to be administered through HR, but is every department that would be eligible for this or would benefit from this, we would share the cost and we would spread that out. So it's not like you're, you know, having to make that big bump in terms of purchasing it. It would be administered across all these departments, if that makes sense. So if you don't, if we, you know, have that conversation with Sheriff Giles and we have that conversation with Chief Moody, and there's no benefit to their being a part of it, it still doesn't really remove this as a real benefit of the rest of the county. You know, I think that we all know that the training of personnel is one of the most important things that we can do, because you want your employees to deliver good services. And this is one way of ensuring that. I think I talked earlier in a meeting that what we want to do is have annual personnel development plans, you know, for every department, that they're going to show us what they want to do with their employees. And it's not pie, you know, we're not going to let it be, you know, I'm going off to the Bahamas to learn about doing accounting. I'm sure Ms. Hahn and her staff would love that, but that's not what we're proposing. We're saying every year you're going to, you guys are going to commit to doing certain things so that you can continue to advance. And that's, I think, what we're, and this helps tremendously to achieve that.
In addition to that too, so like this year, we changed over to SharePoint, or we added SharePoint to the computer and we had to do training on that. We had to pay for that separate training for everybody who wanted that training. When we switched over to Office 365, we also had to do training. That's something that's across the board, that this, they have courses that would talk to that. Cybersecurity, we have training that Chris pays for. Every year we do, I think we did three different classes for training. And again, that would answer that for across the board. So it does have those types of classes that would answer and again, be available for all the employees and check the box where you're not paying individual cost for say cybersecurity, individual cost for SharePoint, individual cost for Excel or whatever the harassment training. We just had harassment training, over $4,000 for four sessions. So that's something that again affects everybody. Mr. Dunn's had a question, our IT Director Vincent, in regard to the training. So cybersecurity training, one of the things that it actually does is it looks at our emails and it kind of tests those emails to see if there's phishing, tell me if I'm incorrect. And so it will help employees recognize, you know, when there's an email that's not appropriate to open, or if it's a phishing email. Does the training cover that capability?
Yeah, I do believe there are a number of courses related to cybersecurity risks like phishing. We actually use this system internally at NeoGov to train employees on things of that nature. And Chris, I'm more than happy to share with you an export of the course library, and I'll just break that down just to those that are IT cybersecurity-related. And I can even set you up with a sandbox to kind of go through those and preview them if you'd like.
Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Vincent.
I would also be interested in what the schools, I see a bunch of courses for the schools that could maybe be useful in this. I would do, would like to comment, thank you Amanda for pointing out that it costs $4,000 for the fire and rescue training we just had. So that's, that is an important part, or I didn't know it costs $4,000 for that. So if we can save money for these other courses, it would pay for itself, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, sir.
But if it's not going to be useful for the entire county, I'd like to know that too.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll plan on putting it at the next meeting, and we'll have a conversation with Chief Moody and Sheriff Giles and let them have a chance to go through this with Ms. Samuel, and then they can report back at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question. I mean, I don't know if you can answer this. So if we pay the amount of money in the annual fee, that means we can use whatever courses for as many people, you don't have to pay individually, it's just one-time fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, man, I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Vincent.
Thank you, Vincent.
Thank you.
All right, next up I see is Mr. Mason. Thanks for coming out.
Question about technology trust, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. I was just looking at from previous years, the actuals, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it again, seeing how much was spent, how much was been adopted previously. And it was just a significant percentage increase. And so I was just trying to understand what exactly that's used for and what the goal is for that increase.
Okay, it's a fee that we collect on every land recording, every judgment and every civil filing that gets deposited into the state treasury. It is controlled, or I guess budgeted by the compensation board. So it is based on the amount of money that we collect in under that fee that has to be used for technology improvements, for land records, access to court records and things like that. So it is basically what's called an in-and-out account. Whatever we collect, we estimate it, it's about a year and a half out. But in the past and in the future, I would never spend any more than actually what we collected. So if I send a bill to the county for $23,000 for software conversion, that is reimbursed by the compensation board the following month when I submit my budget to them.
Tracking, I appreciate, so I assume we'll see something on the revenue side that kind of matches it. And so, okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any else, questions for Mr. Mason?
That was easy enough, thank you.
Man, that was super easy.
Chris reminded me to say how I saved IT money because I buy most of my own hardware.
All right, next up Sheriff Giles.
Good evening Chairman and members of the board and members of the prison boards. I've been asked to come here tonight to answer a couple of questions on the E911 budget. The question that was given to me were the FYI, I'm sorry, FY20 actual is 873K, the FY21 actual is 100, I'm sorry, 1.2 mil, FY22 adopted is 1.05 mil, FY23 request is 1.3. The question is, how was this request developed and can the difference in the actuals and the adopted and the request be explained? Before I get into it, I'd like to thank Donna and Levita for their assistance in providing the data so I can attempt to answer these, this request. It appears that the figures that you received for FY21 are incorrect. FY21 actual was 1.05 million instead of the 1.2. We had some turnover during the fiscal, during that fiscal year, and thus had to pay out some payout leave. Because of the turnover, we thought we had some vacancy funds, so we promoted a communications officer to a higher salary. She moved up into a training environment or training position, so that warranted a little bit higher salary. Also, after transferring funds from the Sheriff's Office budget, I paid the communications officer a one-time bonus, communications officers a one-time bonus, when they were not included in the hazardous duty pay bonus that some of the deputies and the administrative person, personnel received in the office. So I transferred some money after the request went to Dr. Young and Donna into that, into the E911 budget, so they could also receive something. The overtime did exceed what was budgeted, and this was as a result of meeting with a representative from the US Department of Labor concerning how we were paying overtime to the communications officers. It was discovered that we were not paying overtime correctly, so we paid some retroactive overtime. We also had a slight overrun on part-time salaries due to covering some vacancies we have. For the FY23 request, there is an increase in salaries since the E911 communications officers are also included in our pay step plan. In FY16, the board approved two additional positions for the 911 center, which were, which were not figured into the previous year's budgets. We've been trying to fill those vacancies with qualified people ever since, and will continue to try. And all additional salaries have increased to the FICA and Medicare taxes as well. And not to mention, there was an overall increase in the operational items. There's also been several changes in the FY22, 23 budget requests from the previous adopted budgets. Account 3310, for instance, was moved from the Sheriff's Office budget to the E911 budget. Account 3320 increased due to increase from communication specialist fees. And we also added console cleaning, which is imperative, because if you're ever around a lot of computers and fans, dusts get all over the place, and this is a specialized company that comes in and cleans without taking us offline. So we're able to maintain the center while they clean. It's also for the AppCo software yearly maintenance. In FY22, we purchased an AppCo software, which is when somebody calls in a 911 and gives them a medical situation, I'm not breathing, they bring it up on the computer and it tells them the questions to ask to provide to the providers that are going to the scene. The first year was free for the maintenance, and now there is a yearly fee for that maintenance. Account 5320, although that did decrease due to no longer having to pay for the true-up Account 6011 was increased for uniforms for hopefully being able to fill those vacancies and replace the worn uniforms that are currently in service. In account 6050, we are requesting to replace two desktop computers that are broken and 10 years old. We use those computers for applicant testing and also for training. So essentially, that's, that's the difference. So I hope that I've answered the questions for the difference in the actuals and the adopted and also the requests. And I can try to answer any questions that may have arisen from my presentation.
Questions? Ms. Granger?
I don't have a question, I just want to say thank you for the clarification and stepping through the different accounts to, I was, had some confusion, so I appreciate you taking the time and helping me understand, so thank you.
I hope I eliminated the confusion and didn't add to it.
No, you didn't. It was very clarifying, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Collins, no one? Ms. Chetton? Thank you Sheriff Giles. Next up, Mr. Franklin.
Now it's on. Good evening. So you have some questions, I believe, on the public assistance and purchase services
Yes, again, it was me. So I apologize, I was just, the request for the public assistance, I'm trying to again go back, I believe the previous fiscal year was, or the actual was 600,000, but the request for this come up is 520, and I just want to make sure I understand what happened before and why there isn't a need now, which I'm fine with. I mean, it's always nice to not have to spend more, I just try to understand.
Sure, yeah. So when we have, when we prepare these program budgets, so they are significantly different than our admin budget. The program lines, we follow two protocols. One is based off of projected case needs. So budget lines such as fostering futures, anything that says adoption, assisted living, foster care maintenance, or independent living, all of those are very, are case-specific. So those will fluctuate each, each year, based off of the number of anticipated cases we have in those, in those profiles. The remaining budgets, we budget based off of previous year state budget allocation. So we never know what is going to come in the family preservation block grant, or safe and stable families, but more or less it's the same every year. Safe and stable families, for example, is around $18,000. Those just come to us, we don't ask for it. Well, a few of them, we apply for, there's a basic process where we say we would like that, that money, but, and lay out a general plan, but they're going to come to us no matter what. So we're just accounting for those programs in the local budget to account for what's coming to us in the state budget. So specific to your question about public assistance, what happened in FY21? We saw an increase in adoptions and an increase in fostering futures. One thing I actually came to find this year was that fostering futures, we had been paying for it, but we didn't have a local budget line for it. It was still coming out of our budget and we were fine financially, but we've clarified that with Donna and Levita, so we're good. Also, we have had some, some children transition from adoption subsidy, so they turned 18, they're no longer adopted children, they're now moving into a fostering futures program. So maintenance rates are typically, or frequently, less. You'll get a little more maintenance clothing allowance, as well as if you have special needs, adoption, you're, I mean, you could, those adoptive parents could be getting $2,000 a month. They transition into fostering futures, it's $735 a month. So, so we've seen some changes in that. And then some children have just aged out of adoption subsidy altogether, or completed the fostering futures. So they've aged out. So that's probably the biggest difference. This budget year, we believe this is the, meets those case-specific needs, and that's why it's less. And for the, the purchase services questions, I believe, those were solely based off of the state allocation. So that's just, we will know, we will know that by the end of May, or end of April, beginning So that's just we will know we will know that by the end of May begin or end of April, beginning of May, when we receive the state allocations.
Thank you.
And then, oh, go ahead. I was just going to let you know I can pull it up for you if you like. But the bulk of our budget is reimbursed. So essentially, 25% of our budget comes from the county and the rest is state and federal dollars. So if you ever would like to see the breakdown of that, we I can certainly provide that.
Anyone have questions? All right. Thanks, Jonathan.
Sure. Thanks.
Next up, Mr. Newchar. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Your new position.
Two more weeks.
I'm always late, so I'm going to tell you early.
Ladies and gentlemen, we received two questions with the Department of Solid Waste Recycling. The first one was how how much has staff increased over the time that the county has been responsible for the convenience centers? The county assumed operation of the convenience centers on November 5, 2018. At that time, we started with two full time attendants and six part time attendants. Now we have three full time attendants, four part time attendants, one full time truck driver in one vacant full time position for a reserve driver slash landfill attendant. As you know, also, you know, our centers are open 146 hours a week, 160 if you count the 30 minutes before and after the shifts. The second question, I guess, is there any follow up questions regarding that one? The second question was, what is the $150,000 budget request increase for? Now, that's is 240. You probably noticed that there's a different categorization of the expenditures now where the the convenience center now holds convenience center salaries and the associated benefit cost. Now, on the landfill side, there was a significant increase in our costs. In May and June of 2021, it was discovered during a contract review by waste management that the 17th amendment to the landfill agreement didn't just require the county to man the centers, but to man, operate, maintain and provide all necessary services and equipment. That's a six figure requirement. We now have to do refrigerant removal, processing and recycling, scrap tire processing, brush grinding twice a year as well as infrastructure maintenance. So that would be everything from maintaining your compactors to replacing burned out motors to replacing, you know, a rub rail on the concrete or repairing the concrete or the asphalt or cutting out jagged rebar that's sticking out from two decades of deferred maintenance. So there's a significant cost increase on our end. We also, as you know, have purchased a new Peterbilt 567. So we're hauling all of our own containers, our trash and recycling containers. So there's an additional fuel cost. We budgeted the fuel based upon the the government's projection from their their energy office, which, as it turns out, is going to be low. But so we have additional fuel costs and, you know, two trucks. We used a repair cost on our MAC last year was almost 16,000. It was 15,900. That's going to go down. We have a newer truck. That truck's going to be used less, but we're going to have. We had 10 replacement tires on the MAC last year. We've gone through two tires on our Peterbilt in the last five weeks. None on the MAC because the MAC is down for service. But I mean, there's going to be an increase in cost with running two trucks in addition to all these other additional services.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Thank you. So that you said that was in 2021 when you all sat down with waste management to do a contract review? That was discovered and it was the 17th amendment?
So the the 17th amendment was the one that went into effect on November 5 of 2018, which.
That went into effect in 2018. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I got understood the dates right.
So waste management onsite personnel, as we understand it, the contract was drafted at their corporate office submitted here. Waste management onsite there onsite here did not realize that the agreement had transferred the responsibility over to the county. So waste management for the end of 2018, 2019, 2020, even up through, you know, almost 71, 2021, continued grinding the brush pile, pumping and recycling refrigerant, handling the tires and maintaining infrastructure. But during the investigation last late May, early June was discovered.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next up, human resource. Amanda, you got another one to do?
So I I asked Amanda to be here tonight because there was some question wanting to look at her operating budget from last fiscal year to the current fiscal year. So I there weren't any specific questions, but I wanted her to be here in case you had any.
Thank you, Ms. Sumiel. Thank you for being here. So I knew that with the salaries and the requested position, I knew that was part of it and the software. I just didn't think that was going to be all of it. And so I guess what it's really going to come down to is based off of from last year to this year, the professional services. That seems to be the big delta to me. And so I'm trying to understand what is the what is the goal of that that allocation? What's it for?
Sure. And I apologize. I just came up last time. Didn't say good evening or anything. I just Benson was doing the presentation and I stepped up just if you had questions. But to explain that, so previously last year, we didn't have anything in professional services. We put $30,000 in for a classification and comp salary study. So last time when we had that, that was $24,000 and that was put in my budget. I've actually got one quote back. I've reached out to several. And the quote is the one we have currently is with Evergreen, who is who we used last time. And it was $38,500 for a full study. So that was that placeholder for that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. That was all the questions I had.
Okay.
I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Han, outside agencies?
So what I'm trying to do tonight with the outside agencies is the the sheet that I gave you was what I had previously provided to all of you. But in the yellow highlight in the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget request, the yellow highlight are the agencies that you've funded last for in the current fiscal year. And then the green highlights were some of the other agencies that you've recently had come and present. And then it also has everyone else who has requested money from us, starting with the Department of Forestry, down those we are mandated to provide. But I'm trying to facilitate. What I wanted to do is facilitate where you all are leaning towards so that we can start making our budget come more in line with what we're going to go forward with. So I didn't know if you all wanted to facilitate some discussion and make any decisions on the outside agencies.
Mr. Granger?
Sure. I'd be amenable to continuing with the ones that we have previously funded in this current adopted fiscal year. I'm going to entertain if the rest of my board members wanted to look to increase anymore, but I'd leave that to hear from them if there's anyone who wants to advocate for any of them. I would stick with just the three, though. Based on what my current stance would be.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collins?
I think it's a little premature to decide any funds yet until we find out what the revenues are. So I would hold off on any decision until we have a clear picture of revenue.
Mr. Chair, so I'm kind of in between where Mr. Collins and Mr. Granger are, where I think it'd be useful for us to at least strike out. So you can give us a new number when we come back, a new number on the bottom and then have a deeper conversation like Mr. Collins is suggesting once we have the revenue side. So I think I'm kind of, like I said, in between and looking for a happy medium where we can at least get you something to move forward, but knowing that this wouldn't be final tonight because we just got this and I I think we could all use some more time. Thank you.
Senator?
I'm an amenable to that. I mean, one of the ones I would strike out first is the $174,000 for MICA.
Yeah, I think if we could narrow it down to who we would like to see the funds go to, if we can at least get them down to four or five and and then, you know, look at those numbers closer when we find out how much money we have to actually be.
And also, do you want any of the other agencies to come and present to you?
Those would be the mandated ones.
I think we're fine, Mr. Collins.
Excuse me?
Do you have any other agencies that you would like to have come present?
No, I don't have any agencies to present. I mean, if we had the money, I'd fund them all. But we'll see where that comes out.
So you want to just do our ones that we have done in the past?
The three yellows?
Right. As just as you'd say placeholder.
I guess my only question on that would be the Brisbane homeless shelter because that is a big jump.
Good point. Yeah, that was something I have circled. But, you know, if we just say yes for them and then we can work a figure later on.
Mr. Chair, so if we're going to narrow it to a shortlist, at least for consideration right now, for me, I'd like to see the the three in yellow and also Empower House and the Fredericksburg area food bank. I don't think I would come in. I wouldn't be able to make them as whole as what they're asking for, but I'd like to see it still on the sheet for consideration at a future meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the three in yellow and Powerhouse and the food bank, we'll put that on the shortlist for next time? Okay. Great. Thank you.
And so I don't know if you've all had time to look at the I know you had an expenditure, the big sheet last week and the big sheet this week. And Mr. Granger did pose a lot of questions and that's who we had come tonight to talk to you all. But in looking at that, are there other departments that you might want to? Oh, yeah. Mr. Clark. Yeah, Mr. Clark is out of out of the state right now. And I know there were some questions on his budget and he said he would be more than happy to come next week and talk to you all about that. And so, you know, in addition to him, is there any other things that you see here that you would like to discuss as to what the requests are about?
I think just Mr. Clark or.
What's the question?
What was that?
What's the question? Were there any other departments you want to see? Come back and have a more intensive look at their departments. Mr. Clark would be the only one because I believe Mr. Granger had some questions about the parks and recreation budget, but he's a he's out of town this week. So.
And then I'll probably do it just when Chris gets back. He can he can come speak to us next time.
What we would like to do is at the end of next meeting, give you our proposal. Key is proposal of reductions. And so, you know, is my job as your county administrator is to provide that information. And so I understand, you know, Mr. Clark will be part of this discussion, but we'll have some other things that will be ready to go in terms of from an expenditure side. I think that, you know, you're going to get a budget from the schools. You have to get a budget presented to you by the 31st. But I think as everybody knows that we have a situation with the state level where they don't know some things. And we will get with Dr. Benson and his staff and and talk about what is coming because there is some fluctuation in terms of what happens with this capital money. Is that correct? And so we but but I do believe they can provide you a budget. I don't think that it's a problem for them to provide some kind of a budget that maybe has to get amended later or whatever. But I we need to we're looking at that on the 30th of March.
And one of the issues that we are running into is that the General Assembly did dismiss last week without a budget, which unfortunately affects our revenue numbers. We don't know what the state is. One of the big topics is the school budgets. The House and the Senate are way apart still on those. The governor has asked for them to try to work together during the time that they're off. But, you know, I'm not sure. I mean, Dr. Benson had presented a preliminary budget to the school board on February 14, I believe it was. And he presented the governor's proposed budget. And then when it came to the state and the Senate and the House, they each had. The Senate is very much like the governor's budget, but the House is differs. And so depending on what what budget gets approved, they could be what was in the preliminary budget is a 4.3 million increase that they're asking from the county, and it could go higher than that, depending on what budget gets approved. And so that's a very, you know, a big variable that is an unknown at this time. What we can do, what I can do over the next week, too, is just look at different scenarios to based on what revenues might look like if we do different on the real estate taxes. The Commissioner of Revenues Office has provided me with what the totals are in the land books and what different tax rates would realize in revenue and kind of like level fund some of the other things to give you a brief picture of the revenue budget. But until we get the state budget, the revenue is going to be hard, you know, other than just doing level funding. So if that's if you like that, we can bring that at the next meeting as well.
Sure.
And we had also internally, we've talked about bringing in Kyle Lau with with Davenport at some point. I think we're looking at probably after you've seen the school budget sometime in April because there's obviously things that you need to think about as you go into setting what your tax rate is going to be. There are things obviously with this budget, but there's also capital projects that may have the need to be looked at in terms of the long term financing and, you know, how you do that. And so, you know, we know that we have a fire station that has to be built or at some point. And we have a public radio system that, you know, we are that the sheriff has talked about. We have courthouse situations. And then the school board obviously has a need for a preschool facility. And so those things, we want to kind of package with this so that you have all the information you need to do a decision on on what you guys want to set your rate at, you know. But yeah, what we can do then would be give you some proposals of some reductions. I realize you're the final say on everything. So whatever I propose, I realize, you know, it's it's your decision. So if you want to add something back in or you want to change it or you want to go even further, we're here. It's your, you know, your disposal. And then we'll provide you some estimated revenue numbers that we can kick around and see if there's some things. I think we need to. We will reach out to Chief Moody to see if he's ready on the 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 fire inspection fees that he was doing some research on. I think we y'all had asked for that to come back at the next meet at a future meeting. And so we'll we'll see where he is on that and that could be a presentation. I don't know if dismiss. I don't know if, does Ms. Hart need to come back? Is there anything that she has? Maybe answer the question that Ms. Kupka had had about the vehicle registration, if that's something that needs to be looked at?
May I, Mr. Chair? So I had a suggestion, because it is substantial and would be a big bite all at once, but if, if it pleases the board, could we have staff look at some options, maybe? Because it's $23 a year, so maybe one option is all at once with whatever adjustment in the personal property tax, right? The percentage of the value. And then another option would be, say, $12 the first year, and $11 a second year, to eliminate the $23 over the course of two years, and then a third option, like eight, eight, and seven? Or did I do the math right? Yeah. Over a three-year time span, just to see what some options are. I mean, not committing to anything, of course, with all the different variables we have in play this year, but I would like to see, is that okay with everyone if?
Do you want to bring back options to remove that monies?
The revenue, yes. Yeah, to remove the vehicle license fee of $23 per year.
Well, generally speaking, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to bring it back to remove it, because I don't think we can afford to remove it. This is pretty sizable, and with all the requests and needs, I think that we need to just leave it the way it is.
So would there be consensus to at least have staff bring back the options?
I'm
I'm not committing to removing it tonight.
Options, but, so it wouldn't be removing the revenue overall, it would just be changing the way the revenue comes in, because it'd be a change to the personal property tax to match the funds. So the dollars would come in, still come in, it would just come in through as opposed to that $23 flat fee?
Yes, that's how neighboring
Yes.
localities have accomplished that in the last
Then, yes, I'm amenable to taking a look at that.
Mr. Chair, so what I'm understanding is, so the fee would still be assessed, it would just be kind of rolled into the value of the personal property taxes?
That's what Stafford County does. They, and I just barely looked at their, in reference to Ms. Kupka's email back to Ms. Hart, was that Stafford County has done that, and if you go on their webpage, they say that, that they did it. I don't know exactly how they completed their figures. I do also know that I could double-check again with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, but the last I checked, I was told that they wouldn't have the valuations back on the vehicles until the end of this month. So we wouldn't, to even start to look at scenario, we'd need to wait until we got those valuations to see what the personal property tax rate would need to be in order to eliminate the
Okay, so what I'm understanding, so to get the revenue back, tacking onto, that's kind of defeats the purpose of it, but I understand what you're saying, I needed clarification on that. Thank you. But I do have one more question. The school rate that we have to support, you mentioned it was about a 1% increase, does that still stand?
Well, it all depends on what budget gets approved.
Okay, so that could change also, because I remember I asked, it's based on the census and the property values?
It's, because they're, well, our composite index is not going to change, but what changes is
The percentage.
Well, it comes up with what the state says that they'll find, you know, fund, and then based on what they fund, then our composite index is multiplied against that, and that comes up with the required local effort.
But our composite index did increase, correct, with the
That's correct. It went from, and don't quote me, I had it last week, but it was 37.85, I think, in the current year, and it's going to 38.05 for next year.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
So I'm still trying to sort out, so is there at least consensus to just have staff look at this and bring us back some options?
Yes.
I'm good with that, but does Ms. Holland have to wait till they have the?
And if they don't have it, they don't have it, and we don't do anything.
But, yeah, so, yeah, once, once it comes in, then, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Right. We'll put that on our list, because there are other revenue options that you can start considering. I'm not saying you want, that's adding fees or anything like that, but, you know, we'll, we'll sit down with Ms., with Ms. Hall in Community Development, make sure that we're up to speed on all of our building permits, and the fee ranges, and all those kind of things. I want to visit with Jeff Jenkins and with Mike Newchuck about, you know, is there anything at the landfill? Because I, we have had discussions about that, and I know Ms. Hart has had discussions with us about the fact that you have a lot of, I mean, I, for lack of a better way of phrasing this, you kind of have like a black market out there where people are getting those vehicle registration tags, that they go to that office, and then they're selling them. And we have people that are in Stafford coming and dumping their wastes, and in Westmoreland that are, have those legitimate tags, and, you know, they're able to dump for free, and Stafford doesn't, doesn't allow that. And so we've talked with Waste about some other things, and we just need to kind of sharpen some things up, but I would agree, we're not ready yet for that. We can come back when we deal with some other revenue opportunities to address what Ms. Kupka is talking about. Should show you how it would look.
Yep. And when you get them, just, you can figure them out from there, just for us to look at the different, you know, scenarios. Okay? Thank you. That's it? That's all you have?
Yes, I guess that's our next steps, is that we're going to have Chris Clark come next week. We're gonna see if Chief Moody is ready to present his revenue from, for the fire inspections. I will reach out to the Commissioner of Revenue's Office to see if they've got an updated timeframe on receiving back the valuations on the vehicles, so that we can run some numbers there. And then we, I will run some preliminary revenue numbers, and of course, they'll be very preliminary, because we don't know what the state is going to do yet. And that's for the comp board, as well as the schools, and just run some different scenarios, plugging in at the different tax rates for personal, I mean, for real estate taxes. Is there anything else I'm missing that you need for us to bring back to you?
I think you've got it covered.
What we can show you, too, is, you know, current rates, like, we can say, okay, the comp board's going to level fund it, this is what it would look like. We know that that may not be true, we know that the schools are obviously going to get something, you know, we can start doing any kind of scenarios you may want, but, you know, it gives you a perspective of where things may stand. I think the other thing that has to be looked at, I guess we'll wait until you get further into April, and you have to adopt, obviously, a budget, so that the treasurer can set the tax rate. And if, if it is a situation from a standpoint that the state is in some kind of, you know, loggerheads, and they can't come to an agreement, and it starts to affect that, I guess you have the avenue to proceed with adopting your current budget as it is. And, you know, having whatever you do, setting the current rate, I guess, I know people may not be happy with that, but you could then come back, once that information is available, and amend your budget after, you know, because you have to have a budget set by the 30th of June. I mean, that's just law. And so, you know, you could come back afterwards and make some kind of an emergency amendment or whatever, based on the new numbers. I think that's always available to you. So.
All right, thank you. So we're going to be here on the 23rd, 6:30 again, I take? 22nd?
Yeah.
No, 22nd is a joint meeting, 23rd would be for budget.
Yeah, we've, I know that Ms. Smith basically has kind of carved out unless something has slipped in before, but you have Wednesday nights. Yeah. Is the 5:30, which we did, is that good?
Yes, I appreciate everyone entertaining me for tonight to push it to 6:30, but 5:30 should be fine for me, if everyone else is amenable to that.
5:30, good for you, Mr. Chen. Tough on me, but I'll be here. Thank you. Okay, so do we have an adjournment?
It's the 22nd?
22nd, 5:30.
5:30 in the boardroom?
Boardroom here for the joint meetings.
Okay. I moved to adjourn until Tuesday, March 22nd, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.